My, um. Last but fairly wasn't. Not impressed by the foundation. Okay.
Who was that at us?
No. Like this guy's Brian. There's an item for him. Proposed at forty and oh six. And we we need to know the master plan. And so, you know, if we approve that, then this is it's in there, but we can send it back to them. Bring that.
Yeah.
All personal. Right, right.
And then.
Yeah. What?
Didn't you do anything?
Um, I try.
Very.
I try. I don't know.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's seven o'clock. The meeting will call come to order. I'm Grace Luesbrance, Cascade Supervisor. Please rise or clerks later, please call the roll and we'll do the pledge.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Luesbrance.
Here.
Treasure Corstun.
Yeah.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerks later.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Simply moves to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve the agenda. All in favor.
Uh, right.
Opposed. Motion carried. We have two presentations to the board this evening. The first relates to the library, Kent District Library, and the second relates to the township's annual financial audit. To begin, we've got several members of KDL, but specifically, we know we've got Ms. Elvia Myers. Uh, she's here on behalf of the Kent District Library to present the community report. So, welcome and please proceed. You too, Lance.
Hope you scheduled everything for us, but we are joined by Carla Hatz, who is the board member who represents Cascade Township.
Even better.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Always wonderful. Kicking us off.
And just in case you haven't heard, everyone is raving about Lulu, so.
We are too. We love her.
Um, I've never been here before.
Well, welcome.
In this area, but, um, hello, everybody. Good to see who I am. Um, again, I'm Carla Moyer Hatz. I'm the newest, your newest trustee for this region. Um, and I am delighted to be partnering with you and the Kent District Libraries. I've been working in public libraries and academic libraries for almost thirty years now. So, I'm just super happy to be able to offer my talents and expertise in what I've done over the years to, um, the citizens of Kent County. So, um, I'm very excited about everything that's going on at KDL, especially this summer. And I just wanted to say thank you for your support and partnership with us. And I hand it over to Lance.
Well, I always love coming here, always among friends and family. And we appreciate you all so much. You know, the the support we get from Cascade Township is invaluable in making the services here, services here extraordinary. Um, I will be brief, um, just a couple of things. We were really honored to be recognized as five-star library this year by the Library Journal. One of, we're one of two libraries in the state to be recognized. And only five percent of the libraries nationally are recognized as star libraries and even smaller percentage are recognized as five-star libraries. Our Oliver numbers are coming back up, very excited about that. Um, we have a circulation increase of six percent over seven point one million. Um, our people served went up twenty-eight percent over two point one million. Our computer and Wi-Fi usage increased twenty-six percent over a million. And our programming and outreach attendance increased sixty-one percent over two hundred and eighty-four thousand. And also, I must say that I'm so excited and proud of our ebook circulation. We are actually in top sixty libraries in the world on ebook circulation and per capita even higher than that. And we are committed to meeting people for the app, summer readings going off, great guns. We had over fifteen thousand signups the first weekend and, uh, people are are coming in and enjoying the programs. We had an alligator program, uh, not a petting zoo alligator program recently, but, uh, it's just a lot of fun. And we would not be anything without the superstars that work in the branch, which brings me to introducing Lulu, who is fantastic. We love her to death and, uh, I'll invite her on up here. Thank you so much.
Hello, board. I'm back. Um, thank you for making time for us. Um, I know I've shared kind of what has been happening over the past year, how we've shifted our focus related to being a community hub, making sure that we're meeting the needs of residents. Um, I could highlight how free printing has gone for our patrons. They love it. You can print fifty, fifty free prints in color every week if you want to. Some people abuse it a little bit and that's okay. That's what the library is here for. Um, we've also expanded our tech tutoring services as well. So, we have a lot of seniors that are coming in and they need help with their devices. Or we have people who are trying to move forward, um, in workforce. So, they're trying to get promotions and they just don't know how to navigate a lot of things on the computer. So, we offer around ten hours of on-demand tech tutoring for patrons every week. Um, we've also just really worked on our in-branch experience, which is our programming. So, what really kicked it off was our unicorn party last year where we saw four hundred people show up during Labor Day weekend. This year, it's only continued to grow. So, I talked about the Dino Dig during one of the meetings here where we had six hundred people show up. Last week during Touch a Truck, we had twelve hundred people show up on a Friday to really engage with our building and grounds crew, with Deputy Kate, um, as well as some other local businesses who have trucks. And it was fun for kids to just get used to going on a school bus before the school year starts. Um, in terms of impact stories, the biggest thing that still sticks with me from last year, um, that also just reminded us of the importance of the library is a lot of people were coming in because they were lonely or they had no one to talk to. And so, the stories that tend to kind of resonate with me and stick with me the longest, or when I hear someone on desk tell me that they just had someone come in that lost their sister and they had nowhere to go or didn't even know where to begin. And our staff is trained with an arsenal of resources to get them connected, um, if they actually need services beyond our scope. But even more important than that, one of the staff members took an extra moment to say, you're trying to do a speech at the funeral? Well, let's look up some poems that you can potentially read. And so, that moment of having someone come in who's a patron that maybe they're there to check out books, but really they just needed human connection in that moment. That's what we're really, really good at, is making sure that we make space, um, for people to come as they are in this building and to try our best to meet the need. And I'm just really grateful to work in this community because the residents love this library. They come into the library and the partnerships I've had with township staff, with the board. I appreciate all of the positive feedback and the willingness to work with us too. Any questions I can answer or that Lance can answer, since they're here?
Do you want to give a update on, um, indoor remodels? And then I know this has been in the, a topic of discussion for over a year and then also the outdoor space?
Of course. Um, so for our interior refresh, um, Eric Thorne, the township engineer, is working on a request for proposals right now. So, we expect that to go out pretty soon and then we'll come back to the board. Um, so that's still in the beginning stages from what I learned, um, while Ben was making his transition. And now that Eric is taking that over, it'll probably be a couple of months of a process before we get some things nailed down. And that's okay. For the outdoor project, um, we are now at the final stage of the design. So, we have to go back to the DDA, um, on Tuesday to show them the pavilion because they want it to provide some input onto the design of the pavilion. And then we'll come back to the board as well for final approval of the designs and to figure out the next steps to move forward. Wonderful.
Are you, are you going to be adding any parking spaces for this outdoor event, this, this event center?
That wasn't the plan. Um, most of the times when we're kind of busy, it's a few times a year. So, during the summer, we usually have about three programs that are larger in size. Touch a Truck is one of those that are pretty large. And then during the rest of the year, there's a couple that tend to be a little bit larger, but it's for about an hour. The intentional sort of design behind the outdoor space is really to complement how people are currently using the library. So, there might be a bit of a increase in traffic at the beginning, but we're not planning to do a lot of extra things to drive a lot of extra traffic. We just really want people to be able to utilize this beautiful piece of property while they're here.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. Next, we have Doug Bradaveld. He is a CPA and partner at Bradaveld Hefner. He's here tonight to present his findings with regard to the township's annual for, uh, financial audit. Michigan law requires all charter townships to conduct an independent audit of all township accounts at least annually. And Mr. Bradaveld's firm audited the township's funds for the twenty twenty-two calendar year. He's here tonight to present his findings before we have to do our, our work to get it submitted to the state at the end of June. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if you were aware, but I think we had, we had people here the last couple of hours trying to work our.
I know. This will be fun, but you don't get to see any pictures tonight, only numbers, so.
We'll have to listen better.
We'll, we'll get through it, but, um, do you, does everyone have their hard copy of the financials in front of them now? Okay, so I'll just, uh.
Just go there, you can, uh.
She's listening. Okay. Here's my slides, but you can see.
I think I have your slides printed. I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
Them, but I think I found them at the printer, the township, and I might have taken.
Well, that works.
That's a convention.
If everyone had that, that'd be most. Well, first of all, just wanted to say thanks to, uh, Liz and Oksana. They're the staff members who worked diligently with us to, to complete the audit. They put a lot of information together and answer all our questions. And we have them scrambling around, uh, trying to get answers to questions for a good part of a week while we're out here with several of us working on the audit. So, thanks to them for their, their hard work. So, if you do have the copy of the audit, it's page one on, on PDF. It's PDF page number five, but that's the opinion on the financial statements. I should also mention these statements are still in draft form. Uh, they're very near completion. They've been reviewed once. Um, I actually already have some, a couple of changes to it to get it fixed up a little bit, but they are in draft form. So, if we see anything tonight, we'll get that fixed. Because we've always, more sets of eyes always seem, seem to notice other things. But that's right at the top of page one is the opinion on the financial statements. It's a good, clean opinion. The opinion says the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the, of Cascade Township. So, that's a good, clean opinion and what you certainly hope for when you have an audit done. And then just, uh, I usually go over just a few of the, the pertinent numbers with you. Pages, um, five through ten are management discussion and analysis. I don't spend a lot of time in there, but it kind of gives you more of a, a written paragraph form of what's in the financial statements. And I, I go right down to the numbers on page eleven. Let's jump to page twelve and thirteen first. Twelve and thirteen is your overall, um, the entire government exclusive of the fiduciary funds in a full accrual basis. So, it's meant to look somewhat like a business. And just, um, a couple of things to note here, if you look on page thirteen, right at the bottom, you can see the governmental activities. And that again is everything except for your fiduciary stuff, which, which are your tax fund. So, your change in net position was positive increase of six hundred and forty-six thousand and your net position at the end of the year is forty-two million. These graphs have all trend information and so forth on there, but, but just to point out, your property taxes this year represented about forty-seven percent of your total revenue. State shared revenue was eighteen percent and then charges for services, which is right up, up on the previous page, about twenty-four percent. Charges for services up quite a bit from the previous year, I mean, thirty-one percent. Last year was twenty-four percent and that's primarily due to, um, a much additional building permits being issued. That's a charge for service, so. The charges for the building permits. Cascade does permitting for several other townships around, and that's where that revenue is, is coming from, in addition to just Cascade Township.
Do you have any other municipal clients that have that set up?
I believe we have one other one, yeah. Mo-most of them try to do the building departments themselves, but it's just not efficient. So, you guys have seen to it to, to provide that service for a lot of other townships and, and even the city of East Carolina Rapids is one of your customers too, so.
What is the name of the other entity that does this?
I, I believe the Texas Township down in Kelmasood County.
Texas Township?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not a competition for you. No, no competitor. Um, then if you go up to page eleven, just wanted to touch on your net position here real quick. Net position is assets minus liabilities. If you compared current and prior year, you'll see your, um, net investment in capital assets has actually decreased a little bit. Your, um, restricted amount has increased. That's primarily due to that increase in the building department fund, which is restricted money and can only be used for that. Your investment in capital assets decreased because of the issuance of new debt this year. And also because you dispose, we dispose of the old fire station, which is torn down. So, that's disposed while the new one's being built. I will expect that to go up quite a bit next year when the bond money is all spent. Okay, then, just by way of a couple of things in the general fund, which can be found on page. Go to page, sorry, I have PDF page eighteen, regular page fourteen. There we go. The general fund is the left-hand column on page fourteen. Now, one, one thing I would, yeah, right at the bottom of page fourteen. So, we have the various categories of your fund balance in the general fund. And the unassigned amount right there is showing five million, one hundred and eighteen thousand. And there's also a set aside of two and a half million for the fire station. That will be changed on the final document. I just received the email today that it's three and a half million, not two and a half. So, that'll bump the, uh, the, that five and a half million down by, to four point one million will be your unassigned fund balance, which represents about ninety-one percent of your annual expenditures. So, still the, the fund balance in the general fund is in very, very good position. On my charts, if, if you look at the general fund revenues as a, as a trend, you'll see the property taxes have just gone steadily up over the last several years. You get to see this, Wendy. It's on, it's on your fourth slide. And then the, uh, the state shared revenue took a big jump this year and that's because of the twenty twenty census adjustment, which they kind of backed, backtracked and gave you a couple of years' worth. So, that'll go back down a little bit next year.
And that is because of that, that's also what we're using, that increased revenue to pay the interest on the bond for the fire station.
Right, right. I did see that.
Okay, you will take questions on the way through.
Please do, yes.
Um, back at fourteen, um, several years ago, we set up the unfunded pension liability amount. That is down to four ninety-nine now. And I think somewhere in the report, I can't remember exactly where I read it, but our pension liability was almost quite a bit last year to about two million. Since we have that general fund, uh, money available, would it not be a good idea to bump up that unfunded pension liability? So, we know we have it and we know we have to pay it, uh, to reserve for that.
Yeah, that's, that's an amount that, that the board can commit for pension liability. I'm trying to find the page. Yeah, page forty-seven in your audit report. If you look back there, you can see kind of where the pension is. It, um, during the year, the net pension liability from twenty twenty-one was at two point two million and now it's just over five million. So, it took a significant increase in the net pension liability. Um, that, as you can see, that small amount that Jim just mentioned won't cover that at all. But it would be prudent to set aside additional monies if, if you choose to do so. It, I always say it's, it's as exciting as making an extra payment on your house early on in the mortgage because you don't realize it until the end. So, but, but it's very difficult to pay down that, that, um, amount. So, but if you set it aside, you can always uncommit it, should you choose to commit it.
Can we make a decision sometime between now and, uh, June thirtieth to, uh, adjust that figure?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Anytime it can be looked at and set aside. My rule of thumb or a rule of thumb for your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance would be to keep it not below twenty-five percent. And right now it's at ninety-one percent. So, you do have a pretty good measure there.
Question as well? Just, um. Talking about the capital improvement plan and how often, just in your professional opinion, do municipalities go without a capital improvement plan for as long as we have to have those funds, um, potentially allocated in the future somewhere?
Capital improvement plans are usually done every five to ten years and then municipalities run with those over the course of the years. I, I don't know off the top of my head how many or, or if there are others that are going without a capital improvement.
Right. I just, I see the blank. I'm assuming the capital improvement line's under restricted as for capital improvement plan items. Is that correct?
We're, I'm, I'm.
I'm on page fourteen as well.
I don't think it's every five to ten years. I think it depends, but traditionally, um.
Usually.
Many are annual.
Three, five-year.
And then the master plan has, is a every five-year requirement, but the master plan is. Land use in big picture, not cost estimates.
So, the amount you're looking at, that capital improvement amount? It's actually, in your book, it should be a spreadsheet and you can see it on the next page.
Going, sorry. The way I have it pulled up, I can't see.
Yeah, I apologize. So, yeah, there is, there are amounts set aside for capital improvement and that includes the fire station unspent bond proceeds and also the amount that's in the, uh, capital improvement fund.
Okay.
So.
So, it's the amount, so you use the number that was in the fund, but not based on an actual plan estimate? Like, are you saying, there's a, it's, there's a fund that's called the capital improvement fl-fund?
I believe it is called.
Because the plan, the capital improvements plan would.
Yeah, no, the fund would not have anything to do with your capital improvement plan.
Right.
Unless you chose to set up a separate fund and fund it. Right, but there is, she was asking about a line of restricted revenue for capital improvement.
In the fire station, I, I understand that because that's one of the only things that we have.
The, the other amount in there is one of the non-major funds, so I'm just, uh, getting to that so I can tell you exactly what it is. It's the, uh, Improvement Revolving Fund. And that's, that's money that comes in from, um, water and sewer connection fees.
Okay.
That is specifically set aside for that.
Thank you.
So, that's all that's in capital improvement restricted right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, the only other item. There's, there's a couple of footnotes that are worthy of noting. Um, we do have to report to the state if you have any overages of, of your budget. And this year, there are three very minor ones. Um, they aren't big enough that the state will get after you for, but we do have them reported in footnote number two on page twenty-nine. Uh, the, the largest one is a seventeen thousand dollar overage in a transfer out account, so.
I'm sorry, can you please say that again?
The largest one is a seventeen thousand dollar overage in a transfer out account in the inspections fund.
Building Department?
Yeah. The building inspections, yeah. So, that, that was, that was the biggest overage. There's a couple of other very minor ones. And then I was going to point out your long-term debt issuances on page thirty-three. You issued five point six million in long-term debt. You also received a premium on that long-term debt, so it's almost six million in total. You also issued an installment note for Brownfield redevelopment this year, which is also there on page thirty-three. It's two hundred and sixty-six thousand at the end of the year. And then I also, we also have the very last footnote in here, note number eleven on page thirty-eight is a, a commitment footnote. And that, just to give you an idea, at the end of December last year, there was eight point nine million committed for the fire station. I'm sure by now, a lot of that has been spent already. But just mentioning there again, that the funding sources are the use of the, uh, the debt proceeds, the general fund set aside and some other money.
Do you recommend any board action as far as the three overages that you found?
No, the, the, um, if it's over ten percent of a line item that is more than ten percent of your budget, the state will re-require you to reply to them. If not, they will not.
And was that something that could or should have been, um, corrected during a budget amendment or different altogether?
It, it generally gets corrected with budget amendments. Um, with budget amendments, technically, you're supposed to adopt the amendment before the money is spent. It's amended before you spend. So, it's, um, but it's just something to be aware of, something we're required to report. Uh, having three of them in a, a document or a township this size is pretty minimal, really. But just staff watches it pretty diligently, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
With all that you have here, um, is it your opinion that, um, we don't need to make any corrections to get an unqualified opinion from you on our audit?
You have an unqualified opinion, so you're, you're very good.
Are you comfortable making it qualified? Done, check the box or any recommendations?
An unqualified doesn't sound like it's good, does it?
No.
But an unqualified opinion is a good, clean opinion. The qualification on the opinion says everything's fine except for something that's wrong.
Got it.
So, a qualify, a qualifier on an opinion is not good.
Okay.
So, you have a good, clean opinion.
Wonderful.
And sometime before the thirtieth, we can make a correction if we want to to.
Yes, I, I have, I have a couple of questions. There's a couple of dollar signs I have to put in there. I'll change that two point five to three point five and that's in, on several different places. And I think there's one other small thing I can't think of right now, but.
And we would prefer before the end of the month?
Oh, it's, it has to be, yes.
To the state before the end of the month.
We appreciate you, the hustle on your end to get it to this meeting rather than the very last of June.
I'm here.
Sure you enjoyed that.
Yeah. So, no, we have it. Um, I should have finals pretty, pretty much set for tomorrow. Depending on your acceptance.
Wonderful. Uh, and then what, without Ben here, trustee Kessel, process-wise, moving forward, does this need to be formally adopted?
No, we don't have to formally adopt it. We have in the past, but it's not required, right?
Right. Just note that you've looked at it and it's in the minutes that, that we're here.
That we accepted the audit in the past, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah, typically, um, in past years, we've kind of gone through it in more detail at the finance committee level, which is sometimes helpful with the draft copy. And then we always just present basically the pictures to the board, so to make it a little easier for you.
Wonderful.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Article five, public comments. Now is the time to speak on any items on tonight's agenda. Tonight's items include, as we heard, presentations from the Kent District Library, the services they provide here, also the twenty twenty-two financial audit. Um, an amendment to the master plan, uh, dealing with future land use east and adjacent to the Ford International Airport. We have a new parks committee appointment as well as the issue of a new Class C liquor license. Please note that we don't have any additional public hearings scheduled for these items, so now would be the time to comment. That being said, please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record-keeping. Ms. Wanti, welcome.
Chinewani, sixty-two fifty-five, Heathmore Court.
Chinny Wanti, sixty-two fifty-five, Heathmore Court. Timmy, I just want to mention the outdoor gathering space, parks, we've been talking in pathways, adding more so that people could actually come on their bikes. And Lulu was going to get some already confirmed bicycles that just will be able to be checked out at the library and then they can ride from the library elsewhere, which is really cool. And we hope to have Wycliffe Trailhead Park, the concept we're going to talk about in July and then get back to you all probably in August about making that the Trailhead Park. And then we'll get, start getting more things connected, so we're working on it. All that to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone virtually? Okay. Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Their discussion or motion?
I move to approve.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no financial actions this evening and no unfinished business, we are now at article nine, new business. First item, zero four nine, two thousand and twenty-three, resolution to approve an amendment to the township master plan.
We have, yeah.
Oh, I'm on the wrong.
This was at the bottom and this is at the top, so.
Good catch, thank you. We do have financial actions. Why we keep you around. Is there a discussion or a motion for, to approve tonight's financial actions?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the financial actions as presented on the agenda.
Support, and that's for April of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Not tonight, but yeah.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First item of new business, zero four nine, two thousand and twenty-three, this is the resolution. What am I missing? Okay. Resolution to approve an amendment to the township master plan. This issue has been the source of extended deliberations by the planning commission and has been reviewed by the township legal council multiple times. Planning Director Hillbrands, an overview, please.
Right, so here included in your packet is a resolution for consideration and a map showing the proposed amendment to the future land use plan. Back at April twelfth's meeting, the board approved the proposed master plan amendment for distribution and to begin the required forty-two day public review period. That period has ended and the proposed amendment went back before the planning commission at the June five meeting for the required public hearing. The comments that were received during the public review period and at the public hearing are included in your packet tonight. A map of the proposed amendment to the future land use map is also included. The amendment would change the future land use designation of the highlighted area on the map from industrial to rural residential. This map is the same as what you saw back in April, except at the June five meeting, the planning commission extended the area to be re-designated to include an additional area between Thirty-Sixth Street and the railroad, just to the north of the airport extending west to the border of an existing industrial use. After discussion, the planning commission recommended with a five-one vote that the proposed amendment, the future land use map and master plan be adopted by the board. At this time, the township board may either approve the proposed amendment as presented, or if you wish there to be any changes or revisions made, you would then reject the plan instead. If you're rejecting the amendment, it would go back to the planning commission for revision and then another public hearing before it would come back before you. So, and then if you wish to approve the amendment, you then can adopt the resolution included in your packet.
I have a question. So on the final amendment, you see a little tiny blue star in the key, which is an expressway interchange. And to my memory, we made it pretty clear that we didn't want any expressway interchanges anywhere but at Thirty-Sixth Street. So is that a deal breaker? Can we take that out or can we adopt it with that change?
So I would think since that's a part of the map and one of the items on there, if you do want this removed, if you want that removed at this time, I would think it would go back to the planning commission for review then. An alternative is that the planning commission is already planning on doing a comprehensive review of the master plan to make sure it mirrors the strategic plan later this year. So if that's the wish, you could either, again, reject it and send it back to them, or you could kind of instruct them to look at that as they're reviewing the rest of the master plan and they can make that change then. When they're going to make further amendments to it later in the year.
I don't remember seeing that.
I don't, that's what the previous.
This one?
I don't remember seeing the dot the first time we were presented with the.
Star.
Did it get added? That would, that would be something we would notice.
I believe it was. That's been on our current map. I mean, I guess I could check the board pack. But it's on, again, the future land map has those kind of dots of gateway expressway change. It was, it was definitely on the one the planning commission reviewed.
All of the ones the planning commission reviewed or just the most recent one?
Definitely the most recent one. I don't know off the top. I'd have to go look at past packets.
I've supported a lot of this and I do not remember ever seeing this blue dot with the highway, you know, inner.
There is a chance, because we had to get the electronic files from the previous company that made the master plan and then Regis kind of updated them to make these maps. It was possible that maybe got left off a first revision and added. Again, I'd have to double check, but.
We've made this perfectly clear that Thirty-Sixth Street is the only one, and here it is again.
When would that have been added and by whom?
When did we see it last time as a preliminary?
At that April twelve for meeting.
But, so would, would have been added, I don't understand if, I don't remember.
So we got those different layers. I was trying to get those, William and Works made the previous plan, so I had to get the different GIS shape files from them. So initially, they came through with the layers showing the different designations. And then a little while later, he sent me the layer for those dot points as well.
So.
Okay.
It was not on our April twelve.
So I don't think this is a reason to delay the hard, you know, this particular issue. The planning commission never added it. It's just we're seeing it now.
It is on the current map right now. Yep, it was just that issue of trying to get the files from the contractor who made the previous master plan. And I guess it might have been added just after that one.
Was it on our, the only way to access our master plan is from a link on our website? Would those dots have been on the?
Yes, they're on that map.
And they were?
Yep, just to make that revision on the map, I needed to get those shape files, those original files from the company that did that. And then making the new map, Regis assisted with that. And again, those point files didn't come through the first time William and Works sent me information.
So how long ago, I mean, obviously, it wasn't on the ones we saw on April twelve, but at one point was it decided that the future map would have this intersection?
So when it was approved in two thousand and nineteen. This is, so again, if you look on the website, the map has this on it. And there was a copy of the current map in those packets. That would have had it on there, just a PDF copy from the website.
What is, so for the newer board members who have only been here, who weren't around when this old master plan was adopted, when was this approved? When was this?
Two thousand and nineteen was when the master plan, the current master plan was approved.
And does that require bar, board approval?
Yes, it went before the board at that time.
And then.
With the star.
Trustee Nordhook and I were elected in two thousand and twenty, your two thousand and twenty-three appointment. So this was approved with the on-off ramp, like with those, with that land use designation and also the dots for potential on-off ramps?
Correct.
This is what we're changing now, isn't it?
Right, I'm just concerned that, how I learned about it.
Know about this on-off ramp until just now.
Right, it wasn't in the map back in April.
Yeah, no, it was when you voted for it to approve, that's what it's.
And we're changing and we're amending it now.
Yeah, so again, you can either request that change and send it back to the planning commission to be made now, or when they review the entire master plan again later this year, they can just remove it at that time.
How long will it take if we send it back to them just to take off the on-off ramp? Do they do, need to do another public?
Correct, yeah, we need to notice another, another public hearings.
So how long would it take before it came back to the board?
We would probably, probably go to the second planning commission meeting in July. And so then it should have time in the.
Have to give notice.
Yep.
For public hearing.
So it would probably be back at the second township board meeting in July.
And I don't have, sorry, trustee Shipley, go ahead. Well, it, so I, one, there's the argument, do it right when you're, when you need to do it. Two, this is a, this is an important step that the most, but what people, this whole master plan needs to be tightened up, and this isn't the only problem, those little dots on this map. We have to change the language where we mention as a township priority that, to, to develop that portion of the township as industrial and to encourage it, including the expansion of sewer and water. So I, I guess my, I understand that the dots shouldn't be there. I can't believe that they are. Can't believe that we're learning, that I learned about it from a survey online. Having said that, this needs, I don't think, this entire master plan needs to be updated. I don't, you know, our sewer and water map that this board approved at some point in the past, basically to extend sewer and water to the airport, like this is, the language of intent in our master plan is out of date. We did that, you know, that, that basically says that it's our desire and intent to develop that portion of the township as industrial. Like, in isolation, the planning commission hopped on this because of proposed projects that were coming up. I became aware of it because.
Yeah, I'll say the.
You know, a region-wide transportation survey that showed, you know, it's all related. And the industrial development that supposedly this township, prior, prior leadership had had accepted and pushed is completely, completely contradicts the strategic plan, what residents overwhelmingly want, which is to preserve Cascades' character and residential feel. And also economically, it would kill us. It would be a, it would not even be a slow death. It would absolutely kill it. Trustee Nordhook, or excuse me, Chair Nord, Nord Dyke, if there's anything you want to add, as the chair of the planning commission, you're welcome. Would appreciate it. And the parking ride too, how, what the heck?
Thirty-sixth Street, I'm just looking at that. Is that the Thirty-Sixth Street exit?
Yeah, that's correct, yep, at that exit.
We don't have a parking ride there now, right?
No, that's a, again, a future, yep.
No, that's supposedly something we want.
No, I'm just saying, me, I don't personally want that. Me either.
If I could approach the, these things were not something that we reviewed, Wendy's absolutely correct. It was something that was in a layer that was added at the last minute. What I would tell you, though, is that we are, to the supervisor's point, looking at the entire master plan to ensure that it aligns to the strategic plan. So because we've opened that up, should anybody want to come and put a parking ride, they would, we could easily block that and say, no, we're evaluating the master plan. I would strongly encourage you and plead to you to pass this today and we will, we will go back and fix it. But this has been an arduous process, to put it simply, like it's been painful. With, we've had the most aggressive developers that I have seen in my six years of doing this, you know, approaching my planning commission members and, and, and doing some just nefarious things. And it would be, I know Wendy has experienced this personally. If, if at all possible, I would encourage you to, to approve this. And we will solve these blue dots, this parking ride issue by the end of the year. And it will prevent anything like that happening because we are already, we're already looking at it. The same reason that, like, if, if one of the owners put in industrial permanent, we could block it because we said, hey, this is open right now and this is something that we're reviewing.
I feel much more.
You know how you stop it? Yeah, and you know how you stop an additional on-off ramp in people's neighborhoods or right by? You don't allow industrial development because what, that's what drives the on-off ramp. So there, it's all related. You know how you stop industrial development besides making your master plan updated? You don't allow sewer and water, so we need to adjust. It's all related. And for those of us who were not here in two thousand and nineteen, it was frustrating to see, it was like discovering, it was like peeling the layers off an onion. When those of us who were at it, I mean, nothing was shared with us because I think people, if people had known how poised we were for this to all explode, residents would have been livid, livid. And for me to learn about it, sitting on, you know, at home as the supervisor about the airport access study, where, you know, that we were far into the process of looking at potential on-off ramps, to not learn that from staff or from board members who passed it, I just, I, it's not, I just can't believe it. Talk about a failure by multiple levels of this township. If residents knew everything related to this, there is no way. And knowing that regardless if leadership changes, the fact that it's out publicly, it's not going to happen. At least not without a real, I mean, it's just not going to happen. The only reason it got as far as it did is because nobody knew.
I can share anecdotally that MDOT has been at some of the subcommittees that our treasurer was at. Like, there, there's no intention that they have shared with us between now and the end of the year to add an on-ramp or to add a parking ride. So this will be resolved through the actions that we're taking well in advance of any, any, any thing that we have been told by MDOT. And they've been pretty forthcoming with us as we've worked through this process.
Yeah.
So Chris, what I hear you saying is you're most after that amendment of the rural residential.
Yes.
Next to the airport. That's what you want the most right now.
Yes.
And then you're going to go back and revisit these items that we have just mentioned. We didn't know were there.
And they didn't know because the map they saw didn't have.
See, and because it has been advertised and noticed that we are looking at our master plan, if anybody puts in any request for any of these other things that we just talked about.
We can say.
They will go to the, the planning commission and they will say, wait, these are on hold until we finalize this process, correct?
It is, and we've been told by council that that's absolutely, we, we have no, and I'll let Brian comment to this as well. We, we have no legal requirement to, to approve, say, a permit within a specific period of time. It is absolutely the discretion of the township. And if we are actively reviewing our master plan, we have every right to, to hold it. We, we don't have a statutory requirement to say approve a permit in fourteen days.
Chris, just to confirm what Sue said, so you're saying we should approve the resolution to approve the amended township master plan exactly as it's written now?
Yes.
And then that little dot that's there will get resolved at some point when it's all ready.
Well, much like, you know, if you remember, planning commissioner Roland was here and said, hey, it would be fantastic if we could extend this. And then we did that when we brought it back to you. So that is the one change, as Brian mentioned, that has taken place since we were here on April twelve. You all said, hey, it would be fantastic if you could bring this all the way, you know, effectively to close the craft, we brought up the railroad tracks, only because we have a dental office there. We don't want to mess with that. And, and we did that, so just like that, trustee McDonald will do the same thing. We'll, we'll go back and resolve that.
You know, outside pressures, big outside players will have argued this is extreme and to them it is. But I also think it's, it's necessary to be proactive or else it'll just, it'll, our, our side of the township around the airport will look just like the other side of the township, so. Thank you for all your hard work. The planning commission has just done a huge amount of work and spent a ton amount of time and energy on this, so very much appreciate it.
Well, thank you for the support.
Thanks, Chris. Oh, good. I don't know you from a hill of beans, but I'm going to take you for your word and your recommendations. Just be advised that if somehow outsiders wiggle their way in and get their way, probably be a lynch mob and I'll be supplying the rope.
Understood and received, trustee Shipley.
I think Chris will be part of it, so I think we got nothing to worry about. We're all on the same side.
I've led the charge since they tried to put Tent City up.
That's kind of the initial thing, the circus tent.
Yes, yes.
It was going to bring a lot of.
That's where the industrial would have started.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Support by Shipley.
That's a motion by trust, or by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley to appro, to approve the proposed resolution amending the master plan as stated. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstang.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Westburns.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero five zero, two thousand and twenty-three, Parks Committee Appointment. As the board is aware, Treasurer Corstang recently served on both the Parks Committee and the Planning Commission prior to being appointed to treasurer in April. Her appointment to treasurer necessitates her resignation, resignation from both of those committees. I will recommend an appointment to the Planning Commission in the near future, someone who shares the same priorities as far as land use and smart growth as the rest of us. But with regard to the Parks Committee, I recommend the appointment of Mr. Bill Otten. He has an impressive credentials. His resume was included in the packet. And in particular, it was his experience serving as president of the Rogue, Rogue River Watershed. That is very helpful as we work to, to connect with residents. That is very helpful as we, uh, work to, to connect with residents and state and local agencies to prioritize protecting the Thornapple River. Questions, comments?
Is a resident, right, of Cascade?
Correct. He's on the Rogue River Watershed because he has a family farm in that area.
Motion to approve.
Support.
I should just note that the motion to be effective, we should also accept Treasurer Corstange's resignation and then also um, appoint Mr. Otten. Are you okay with me wording it that way?
Yes.
It's a motion to approve or to accept Treasurer Corstange's resignation and approve the appointment of Mr. Otten to the Parks Committee. That was made by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero five one twenty twenty-three, interim manager search. Uh, the board previously received the memorandum from the Human Resources Director Markowski regarding the status of the interim manager search. As she noted, the committee has narrowed the field to three candidates. One of those candidates would not be available for several weeks. Uh, one was interested in a permanent position along with a part-time position and also had never served, uh, as an actual manager. And then the third person, uh, was fantastic, retired, looking for, and very flexible in his hours. So. We shared the information with you and I think we can talk about how to move forward, but I would recommend that, uh, the board consider interviewing this third finalist. And, um, if it's amenable, perhaps we contacted that person and schedule an interview at a special meeting in the near future.
Is he still in New York or is?
No, Ohio.
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 And, and I'm gonna, yeah, the first one was two. The other candidate was on the southeast part of Michigan.
No, no, buddy applied that's local.
Not for the interim.
I think it's a great idea, Grace, about having an interview collectively for the board. And, and they could, there's verbiage in here about working on an offer. I think we could work on the offer. But then the final decision should be after an interview and a vote by the majority. So I think it's a good idea.
I concur with Tom.
Do you want to interview the final two that we interviewed or just the final?
I, I'm comfortable with the final one, but if, if, if it makes sense to do two, if you think the, if you think the two, the second one, it was really. If you don't, if you don't think they're qualified, that's not waste of time.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I agree with your statement completely.
And, and the other one couldn't come for several months?
Other, oh, the other interim, correct.
No, several weeks. He had just finished up another, he was retired also and he had just finished up. He came to us actually through, um, our legal counsel, through our law firm.
Yeah, I, and just my opinion, I think the retired route seems very beneficial to us because I think we can pick whether we want part-time, full-time, what hours we want, what we want. Um, that was just my feeling, being a part of it. It, it just seemed like they had a lot of experience that was very valuable. Um, and I think to be able to keep somebody on interim for a short period, one, once we get to the final and we have our, our permanent person in place too, to help with the transition, would be very beneficial.
The one that couldn't come for several weeks, he is not a retired person.
He is. Two, two retired managers with extensive experience who just want to keep their foot in the door and remain active and truly enjoy it are both from Ohio. The only reason we went, well, no, they were both fantastic. But one was taking a long vacation after, after finishing up at another township. The other was available.
Friday.
You're right.
Both fantastic.
If you, if you had, if you guys had to choose one of the two, regardless of which one could get here first, would you still select?
Uh, i- if, because the, if you can't start for three weeks and we could.
This guy was really.
This guy was.
Is he willing to work full-time if we?
Yes, he, he's, he truly is retired, wanted to stay active, has been re, I don't think he's done an interim role in the past. He has, he has gotten a manager position where he had an interim precede him.
Okay.
He understands how helpful that is and what that person did.
That's good to know.
Um, but he's been retired for a little while, but he really wants to get out and be active.
Do you remember where his name came? Did, was he on the interim list, which is very limited and had some bad ones? Or was he one that Katie?
I think he just applied for the position and I can't remember if we asked that piece, but I think he just applied.
We had it posted four different places and one was the ICMA. I can't remember what that's, it was more out of state.
Can we get an interview soon, like next week?
Look, we'll do it Friday at three.
Yeah, let's do Friday at three.
But we can, we've stayed above water this long. We'll just make sure that unless someone's going on vacation, we.
Before this coming up.
Oh, yeah.
And we, just timeline wise, Sue, just so everybody knows, the, the permanent position closes Friday.
Right.
So. At four. So we're meeting Friday at four to look at the final applicants. We've been looking at them as they've been coming in and we have narrowed them down to a small pile.
And it wasn't hard to narrow it down. There was twenty-one, now maybe twenty-two. It was easy to, and then there were at least like four really good ones and there were.
A bunch, not too much.
A bunch that it wasn't even, I mean, it was.
Yeah. So, so we, our plan is to meet Friday after it closes to then to tell Katie these are the ones we want to interview, schedule them next week. So that's why I think the sooner we can do this interim and move forward because depending on the timing, there will be another special meeting to get everyone to be able to interview the permanent as well.
And that could take a little longer.
Yeah, exactly, but.
And one thing that helped with this candidate, um, and again, they were all good, except it's helpful to not have someone who's looking to get a foot in the door and permanently. But, um, this person, um, manager Swayze had, had said that he spends a, a quarter or a large chunk on the annual budget. So with his departure, we are, um, the new manager who starts hopefully in the fall realistically, to put together that budget coming in. Um, would be pretty tough, but this person, we asked that he has a strong financial background, super, uh, familiar with doing budgets. So even if he primarily focused on, you know, starting up the budget process and also administrating, keeping the lights on, that would put us in a really good position when we do get our permanent person.
I, I think we all want to have an interview with Mr. Andrew Juski. And I would just ask next Tuesday and Wednesday, the twentieth, twenty-first, I have two big work customer events where I have people flying in from.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
New York and Oklahoma and all over. And so I'm just really tied up Tuesday, Wednesday. Other than that, I'll, I'll change my schedule.
It is.
What about Friday or Monday?
Yeah, what about Friday or Monday? It's good.
Monday is this coming Monday?
This Friday, Monday.
Monday is.
Nineteen.
Day, I can't.
It's the what?
That's right, I forgot. It's a federal holiday.
So what about Friday?
Sixteen.
We'll put it this way too, he did a really great job interviewing with us. And at the end, he told us he had just gotten off the golf course and he was in the, in the office of the golf course. So he was more than willing to like.
Nice.
What he needs to do to do an interview, it seems like. Friday.
Right, I, earlier, the earlier the better. I have something at three, but I can change it.
We can switch it around.
If we could make it earlier today, like Friday morning or Friday at noon, whatever.
Yeah, I got Friday morning booked.
Okay, so what about?
Friday one?
One o'clock.
One o'clock Friday.
Do it.
Might as well make the entire week bad, so I'll take Friday afternoon works.
All right, so let's see if we can get Katie to get him scheduled Friday at one.
Do we need a motion?
I've got a couple of questions before we vote.
Go.
Thank you. How far down the road are we kicking the can to selecting a new person? Now, I've heard the fall. Who are we looking at September or October or November?
I can't answer that because there's no kicking the can, trustee Shipley. We're on top of it, moving as fast as we can.
We really are moving as fast as we can. We've been looking at the applicants as they come in. It closes Friday. I think one of the things that we've talked a lot about is they're gonna, it's, it's gonna take a couple of weeks to get through the interview process after that. And then they're gonna have to probably give thirty days notice, we're assuming. And then a lot of people, when they're transitioning from a big job like this to especially a completely different one, including possibly a move. They request two weeks to thirty days in between to be able to transition.
I just think it would be to our benefit to let the interim perspective know while long he or she can anticipate being in this interim position.
Sure.
If I were applying for a job, that's what I'd want to know.
Right, and we should, we can talk openly about that when we interview him, hundred percent.
We asked him if he had a commitment. Like a thought on a minimum commitment, I guess is a good word on his end. And he seemed to be like, no, you know, I really truly am here to help, however long you need me, but yes.
And it might make sense to have an overlap, right?
For sure.
Okay, your question, whatever you say.
I, I do think it would help.
I think it'd be huge.
Agreed.
We would be setting somebody up for success if we could. Yeah, especially the, even just the budget side of things, just to continue with that process. But yeah, okay.
Three to four months, I would expect.
For the intern and then we'll have our other guy in there and they can kind of overlap a little bit.
Yep.
So are you gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that we interview this candidate and hopefully Friday at one o'clock.
I'll support.
That's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by Treasurer Corstange to interview the interim manager candidate. Hopefully Friday at one o'clock. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Article ten discussion. This one is a little bit trickier process-wise. Cascade Charter Township Business Liquor License. So the board in the last month or two became aware that the township is eligible for an additional Class C liquor license, or actually from the state because of its increase in population over twenty thousand in the twenty twenty census. Just like we saw that we're entitled to increased revenue sharing with, uh, that'll pay for the bond, the interest on the bond for the new fire station based on that twenty twenty census. Um, to the extent this issue has been addressed, it appears that there's some uncertainty and some possible misunderstandings regarding the process, both with an outside applicant and also just with the board being aware of the process. So, um, happy to discuss that, I think, the, with potential applicants and also see what the board wants to do moving forward.
I, I read most of the, part of the ordinance that addresses this. Were we able to get all the information that we needed per the guidelines? I can't remember the section right now of the ordinance that deals with liquor licenses. Were we able to get that addressed with the, with the one applicant who had expressed an interest in it?
What did we, what information are you referring to? What do we need?
Well, I don't have it with me unless I can get into the ordinance.
Uh, it does, it does say, Jim, I think I know what you're referring to, requirements.
Yeah, you got a background check and.
Name, age, address of applicant, citizenship of the applicant, place of birth, and like the time set applicant has been in business.
My, my understanding just from reading through that was that that's on the state side of things that we, we need to.
Because it's not on our application.
Correct, that we can, we need to follow some sort of process, I feel, that we have done in the past. But then we make the recommendation and then it goes to the state for them to do those specific items that you're talking about.
Just, this is, none of us are experts in this and without a manager and the staff person who's been dealing with this and handling the process who happens to have strep throat tonight, um, you're kind of stuck with who you're stuck with to listen to. But this is a really, this doesn't happen very often, at most once every ten years because it's a steal. Six hundred dollars versus buying it on the, uh, it means it's a great opportunity versus you can buy them already existing liquor licenses from other businesses in this township or nearby, but this one in particular at six hundred dollars, they don't come up very often and they're, um, highly desirable. So there's what we heard from Andrew Swayze about how this has been handled in the past, but.
And we've already passed the resolution that it comes back, the license comes back to us if the applicant gets the license and then later on wants to relinquish it or needs to relinquish it.
Correct, we amended our ordinance to reflect that upon learning the existence of the additional license. And that took time in itself, but we weren't delaying the process.
Right, but I just meant, we made that amendment, so we get it back, so we, the township can decide and not give it to somebody who can sell it off.
Yeah, legally enforceable, but yes, did as much as we could to keep it in Cascade.
How was this advertised to the other businesses in our township? Does every, did everybody know that this is available? Or is it just kind of a?
This, did the.
Did Ben just say something?
Time we've done, what, I wonder if the other board members know.
Last time we did it, um, we had. Yeah, it was ten years ago, just before, when Bill Cousins was still here. And we had, um, the old Carlos O'Kelly's, it's now a Japanese Chinese restaurant. And we had one other one, I, I can't remember. I just remember Carlos O'Kelly's, because I sent work there. And, um, we notified one, one of the people that requested the license was brand new coming into the township and wanted it. And one had been here for quite a while and wanted it. Um, I, it's, if you want to read that thing, it's section two forty-five of our ordinance, um, on liquor licenses. There doesn't appear to be any requirement in there to notify, but we did it then just so that, you know. We don't know who, who in the township has been here a long time and would like to know there's a liquor license available. So if we don't advertise it, nobody would know. I think that's what we just did, is not advertise it. We, we, we did.
There isn't, there is not an, so I learned that the notice, we were under the, so we were told that the notice requirements had been met, but then recently we learned there are no notice requirements, so we didn't notice it, which is fine. And it's not our license, it's a state license. We're part of the process, but we, it's not our, like, it's just a. We're, we can be part of the process and make recommendations, but this is a state liquor license.
I want to be fair and open to everybody.
That's.
I ran on transparency and I want everybody in this township that might want one to know that it was available and applying.
I agree.
And recently, uh, it was someone mentioned that another local business had, had maybe, but again, I'm just learning all this too. Just like the rest of these trustees had reached out or contacted the township. So it's a little frustrating. I sense the frustration of residents who've been waiting and are frustrated with just bureaucracy and how, and the length of time that it takes and all the steps. Initially, having heard the comments, it sounded like I was afraid we had dropped the ball, but from talking to staff, it's just, we had to amend our ordinance to be fair and it's just the process takes a while and we're part of it, but again, this is a state license, so.
And as far as we know, there are many, any other requests though, Heather.
We.
I learned today that perhaps.
Heard from township staff, which this is not formal anything. I just heard there was another local business. Locally owned business that has been here in the community for quite a while that had inquired about this as well.
Right, but haven't applied.
No, but and I thought, I thought when I asked Ben at two meetings or three meetings ago, when I thought I asked him if there had been other applicants and I thought he said to us there was a couple others. But I'd have to listen to the recording, but I thought I had asked him the process in the past. And I thought I had asked him if there was other applicants and I thought he had said there was a couple.
So how do we put the notice out there for the community?
Well, it's not a requirement, so we get to choose. So we would put it out, we would notice it out as we do other things, which would be, I would assume. Um, our, our website, social media and.
Newsletters.
With a deadline, you can give it a deadline, right?
So there's no public comment set up for this? So I'm, and I'm trying, I feel bad, I ran out of time to contact you. But again, this, we are not the experts in this. This is, and I know you've had a lot of, um, communication with Jessica Stein. Who caught me up to speed and I, I understand it's frustrating from your end, it's frustrating from our end too. Um, we don't, I, I think there's a lot of. Well, yes, but it was, and for the public comment at the beginning, we don't have a public hearing scheduled. So I understand we have one local business who, from their perspective, desperately needs it, a liquor license. And it's very frustrating that the process in general takes so long. I think the board shares frustration from a different perspective. Uh, we want to be fair, but I don't think it was anyone on the township dropping the ball. I think it's just.
Does the DDA have a list of emails for all the businesses?
Great idea. Yes, that's a great idea. Great idea.
Supervisor Westburns, we had that list of businesses I would send out the bus survey to. So that could be one tool to use.
I just want to get it out there so that I don't have somebody calling back saying they never told us.
That's how I agree with you completely, which I am one of the people who did not sign the application that was given to us solely based on. That's how I, I agree with you completely, which I am one of the people who did not sign the application that was given to us solely based on. As a new person, I feel like I needed to take a step back, ask the questions as to what we have done in the past. And make sure that we continue to do the same process that we have in the past, and hearing you say, you know, over ten years ago, but still, you know.
Let's do it.
How long of a notice period? Does the board recommend?
If we're gonna email local businesses and post it. I'm good with two weeks.
I think that's fair.
I'm good with making the final decision and bringing a gavel down next meeting.
Yeah, so that would be. Twenty, thirteen, thirteen days for the notice to be, or for it to complete, for us, to them to let us know. It would be thirteen days so they could show up, that we can make a decision on the fourteenth day.
Which is the next meeting on.
Well, question, just looking ahead, so let's say if nobody responds and puts the application, that's easy. If five respond, what are our criteria? Cause I thought Ben said we had some criteria in the past that I, I, I don't know.
I, that's what I'm saying, I, I think I asked him that question, and I do feel like he gave us some sort of.
Might, might need to ask him again, he said he was available if we.
I texted him tonight.
Because I, I do feel like we need to do that, and I, I, part of me thinks he said it's completely up to us, and I think that we had all agreed that a local. A local business owner is what we wanted to support.
Right.
And so then I think it comes down to if we have more than one local business owner, whether we decide to do a lottery, or what we would decide to do if we have more than one qualified.
Rock, scissors, paper, or something.
Something, where I just feel like, I think all of our, all of us are in agreement that we want to support our small locally owned businesses, I don't think we want to do anything to hinder them. But I also think that we want to be fair, and we want to do what we have done in the past to allow for everyone the equal opportunity. By doing that, I think we'd have to do a lottery of some sort, whether it truly is pulling a name out.
I think what happened last time, I'm starting to remember a little bit, ten years. Pals Diner, I think was the other applicant. And we didn't award it to Pals because the owner of Pals, and I can say it because it's not there anymore. Had issues with the township on paying taxes on time. Um, there were some other violations that they hadn't corrected, that we had noted them for, and so we awarded it to the other applicant because of the two applications. The second one was a clean application and the first one wasn't, so we use that as a criteria. Now, if they all come back clean, that's another problem.
Right.
And that's across, across the bridge when you come to it.
Yeah.
And I would say, is the treasurer, that was the one thing I did research to make sure that they didn't owe us tax taxes, but their business is too young to have started paying us taxes, so. I will say that that is, I feel like the treasurer's signature on that, that was my due diligence that I did do with the one that we had looked at.
Sounds good.
And, and I do think that that's what we'll continue, applicants before they would come to the board, was to do that research to let you know.
So we don't have to actually take any board action, we just are gonna hang.
Here's a question, because I'm not sure, and I've been looking at it, I'm not entirely sure the, um. Realistic timing for an app, actual application to be ready, so my only question would be if we get interest. You know, in the next two weeks, but we don't have the, but they're not where they need to be for the formal application, because they learned about it recently?
I, I'm gonna say I kind of disagree, I feel like they filled out their application, I think fairly quickly and got it to us, I could be wrong, I've looked at the application, I don't think it was anything, I think theirs was handwritten into it, I.
So don't worry about it?
Something you want, and if we notice them cr- right away, especially if we're sending emails and we post it, I think having a deadline is an expectation, and you need to get it in and get it quick.
I think Wendy's right, it's, it's not an order for a applicant.
No, and, and I think we owe it to our other applicant that we have to move to, keep, I feel bad saying this, but keep moving forward as fast as we can, um, in the process.
I agree.
Point, yep.
I would disagree.
So will you direct staff to do that?
Yes, I have to.
To notice out?
Yep. As soon as.
So two weeks to notice out through our regular township communication?
It has to be thirteen days, so that they're due at five o'clock the night be, or the day before our next meeting.
Which is June twenty-seventh?
Yeah, so June twenty-seventh at five PM. Applicants would, or applications would be due by.
The twenty-eighth?
We have that fire station walk through the twenty-eighth as well.
And I'll just need to know them as quickly as possible, so I can.
One, if we mail them, um, to the list that Brian has. Once I get them.
I think he said he has an email list.
He's emailed.
I think he said they have a, right, like tomorrow.
Yeah, one, one of the things that any potential applicant might want to know is that if they surrender it in the future. They're not gonna make a million dollars off, it comes back to the township.
For sure. Yeah, maybe we should include the new.
Can we jack up the price to bear market value, or we're just stuck, we're not allowed to?
That's in our ordinance, I believe.
Maybe we'll just. Return it to, to that.
Yeah.
I'm writing it down so I get everything. During the transition, we have right now with staff, it made it a little more confusing, and I apologize, but two weeks, we'll make the decision and we'll be ready to act in. The next board meeting, I think that's a good balance. Public comments, whether it's on the agenda or not, or, or not, now would be the time to address the board.
Well, actually, five zero, seven zero twenty-eight street. Uh, the liquor license, uh, we've been dealing with this since September of last year, trying to get this, I've submitted everything to the state, the only thing that's holding us back is your guys' approval. To get the liquor license, so that's the only thing that's holding it up, I dealt with, um, Sandra Cohorn. Beforehand, she was the one that was dealing with all this, I know she left, handed it off to Ben Swayze, and then he took it over. What troubles me is that, it feels like majority of you have not known about this since then, so I don't know what was going on from September of last year that I've been pushing forward to this. And from my understanding, nobody else was going after a liquor license other than us.
How did you learn about it?
I didn't learn about it, I just was trying to get a liquor license, and then I found out through the state, the procedures that I needed to do, and they said, well, you have everything you need, now this is the only thing that you need left.
I have a question for you, do you, you know, just in my brief research, I've looked through our township and seen we have these liquor licenses that we're talking about now.
Class C?
Yeah, well, just these that are based on our population, and it looks like back in two thousand eighteen, the DDA had worked on getting, um, special liquor licenses for some. Businesses.
I think that's true.
The Foleen Warehouse and.
Redevelopment, thank you.
So were you working with Sandra on a redevelopment liquor license, or working on this particular opportunity? That we have for this additional liquor license based on our census?
This one.
And you learned about it at the state, that there was an avail, that there was an additional recently issued?
No, they had told me you can go ahead and go get one for escrow, uh, and purchase one, which are like fifty, ninety thousand dollars, that people are just throwing astronomical numbers out there.
That are already available on the market.
I didn't even know anything about a six hundred dollar one or anything like that, and to be honest, we weren't even going after a full liquor license, we were just trying to get a beer and wine license. But the state says that if you're, um, a beer and wine license, you still need a Class C liquor license. Then I had asked, oh, well, what about non-alcoholic drinks? You still need a Class C al-, uh, liquor license, so it's, it's kind of ridiculous. Um, I know that's not your guys' fault or anything, that's more on the state, but that's kind of where the situation is right now, so. We were actually the ones that were pushing forward from the very beginning, and I think since, since then, it's been brought up and then brought in front of you guys that. To have this extra one that's out there for purchase.
Yeah, when did you, I didn't even know this issue, we hadn't heard anything about it until I heard about it from you, when you got it, when you brought it up at the board level.
Yeah, this has been since September, I have the emails back and forth with, uh, Susan and everything, uh, that shows the communication, even with Ben in. I think in November or something like that as well, he wasn't too involved, it was mostly, uh, I mean, sorry, I'm saying Sandra, I'm saying Susan, uh, Sandra, I apologize. Um, that this is what's been going on, so.
Did she tell you then, though, that one was available?
She was trying to help us through the process, um, she was saying these, she did some research on her own, she didn't say if there was one available, that was, I didn't find out until, I think, beginning of this year.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I wonder if she was trying to help them to the redevelopment.
And all the information that she found out, I had already knew already, and I have the emails to show that, um, that this has been going on since then, so. So it's a little troubling that if you guys did throw it onto the open market, and then you do get some big chain or something like that that wants it, um, it hurts.
Exactly, we don't want it, I don't think, we don't want to give it to a big chain over local restaurant.
Business or something like that, that's, you know, more prevalent in the area, let's say it's, um, Innis House or something like that, where they have thirteen locations, they're most prominent in the area. They're more well-known, and we're kind of, we're three of, we're the third Persian restaurant in all of, uh, Michigan, and the only one in western and central Michigan.
Same owners, franchise, or totally single business, solo business?
For.
For this, your restaurant?
We're the only ones, yeah, yeah, the other ones are totally, they've been around for a long time, we're brand new, we've been here for almost a year and a half.
I just meant different owners, or, you know what I mean?
Oh, yes.
You're talking just Persian cuisine, or the actual?
Just Persian cuisine, we're the, we're the, uh, only one on western and central Michigan, yeah.
I was ready to check the box and give it to you, and then this stuff started floating to the surface, and there were.
And I, we completely understand that, it's just that if it's thrown into open market, the competition becomes, and especially if they see six hundred dollars for a fifty thousand dollar normally valued license. It will probably get hostile, so.
That's right, we're used to that, we can handle that. It, it's six, so your options are to throw your hat into this, this new issued one at a very great price? Or search the open market for an available Class C license to repurchase, am I right in that, or?
We can purchase one on the open market, but the cheapest one that I think I found was seventy thousand dollars that somebody are, are selling for.
And how do you find that? Is it at the state, Lara, or?
There's, it, it, it's somewhere on the state's site that you can actually look for it, um, I think there were two or three of them that were available, um, but.
Crazy.
We just don't want to spend that much money for something, and right now, it's a new business, we just don't have it, so. Yeah, so, and I did sign the paperwork that you guys had said that if we were to close or sell the business or something, we would give it back, hundred percent, I'll sign a million of those forms. To show that we'd give it back to you guys, but we're not looking for a profit from that, we want our business to be successful, not off of the liquor license.
Well, and everybody in Cascade wants good restaurants around here, so I think it's awesome to have some variety, and I just appreciate your patience.
And, and, and to make to your point, if some big chain, which, you know, did come in, uh, our attitudes probably will, they got big pockets and they can go pay seventy thousand dollars, right, so.
Hundred percent, even if they're a really good chain.
We really want to support them.
Yeah, we want to support local.
You have to remember, you might still end up with it, but we feel like we have to go through this process.
I completely understand, I just want you guys to have the backstory that we have been going after this, um, and we will hundred percent give it back to you guys, we want to work with you as much as possible. It does affect the business, um, a lot, because people come in, they walk out, once they see we don't have any beer or wine, so.
What was there before?
Was a Mo's Southwest Grill.
Okay, it was Mo's.
Can I add something to that too? Um, you know, we're a small business, as he said, and, um, because for eight months. Nobody was doing anything about it, and, and I apologize for even bringing his name, but we kept, uh, contacting Ben. And, um, there was no response, so finally, we decided we want to go, go meet him, and we went in person and met him. And he did not have any of the paperwork, so we had to, this, we had to fill the same paperwork three times. And we honestly had no clue as far as, um, how the system works as far as getting licensed for, uh, beer and wine or liquor in state of Michigan. So we didn't know there was one available or not, we, they, they just said to apply, and then, you know, um, maybe there's one that they could give us, that's what we were doing, and then we found that, oh. Those are the steps, there's no liquor license, there's now one available, so the other businesses, if they were, they should have applied, like if they wanted it. They should have also applied, and I'm just, you know, I understand you have to go through the process, but it's like, now suddenly it's available, but we've been going after it even though not knowing, and nobody was doing anything about it. This could have been processed a long time ago, but nobody knew about it, so.
And nobody told you about it, right? You had to go out and find it yourself.
Yeah, and we didn't, truly, we did not know what the process was, the only thing that I will say, and I know we have to go through this process. We are putting things, money from our pocket every month just to try to break it even, and if we don't get it, we will close, there's just no question about that. But, um, that's not anybody's problem here, the only thing I suggest, please, whoever you, you, um, um, choose for the management or whoever that is in that charge. The gentleman that's sitting right there, he said that he applied many times, and nobody answered, that's what our problem was.
For the liquor license?
For, no, there was no response, like, uh, no, not.
Oh, for, okay, I got it.
Yes, so, there was no response, so we, we don't know what to do if we're applying for, you know, something. We want at least someone say yes, no, or this is how long it's gonna be, no response whatsoever.
And I just, as a member of the board, and I think everybody here agrees that we have empathy for you.
Hundred percent.
We fully understand your situation, and we are working as hard as we can to try to get a new manager in place, that obviously that that has been identified as a huge issue. And it's unfortunate that you were not given clear expectations and clear guidelines as to what we would be going through to be able to get to the endpoint to get a liquor license. And I apologize on behalf of this whole board to.
No, we, we understand, you didn't know about it, so there was nothing to apologize.
Who is within this township, that should never have happened to you, and it's unfortunate that it did, and it's unfortunate that it continued for as long as it did.
Well, yeah, and I, since, since we've learned about it, we have, like, the staff member has been on it, well, this past month, because all of a sudden we knew about it, but I, it's sad, it's really frustrating to learn that it was September.
It is, but also last month, we were forgotten to put on the agenda, so it was just like one thing after another, so. The only thing I'll say is, please, you know, like, whoever you choose in the future, please, they have to answer people back, because this is our livelihood, like, we will lose everything, simple as that.
We'll lose the election, it makes us look terrible too, so I, even though we're, we've, you know, we can't, a hundred percent agree, I think we both want this, this, that skill set. You guys, they, they owe it to you guys, but also owe it to us, so we just apologize, and also hundred percent are on board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for understanding.
Thank you, Rod Schultz, Orange Avenue, I've been a member of this community for about three years now, retired, moved up here to be next to the grandkids. Have a little problem, that problem is the zoning administrator. Are any of you familiar with the term tag it?
How do you spell it?
T A G.
Space I T.
I T, tag it, we're getting graffiti around here, I call the zoning administrator, and if you look at the liquor store there at, um. On Orange, right across from the bridal shop in Cascade.
International Beverage?
Yeah, mm-hmm, the bricks are falling off the building. There was a cup of urine that's been there for four days in a McDonald's cup, I didn't taste, taste it, but I could bring it to you if you want, I'm not tasting it, but come on. You know, in New York, when they had a problem with the crime, they did something called the broken window thing. You, you start on the thing, you take the small things, if you go to the little park right there at Thorn Apple, uh, there's, somebody's tagged some of the stuff in there, they removed a, a monument there, so. You know, I've been on planning commissions in three different cities, I'm familiar with what goes on, but you have to respond to the, to the, to the citizens, and we're not getting that from you people.
No, you are now, I completely sympathize.
I, I, I listen, I listened to you berate the, the board the other night, and I thought it was beautiful, I couldn't do that good a job myself, but the thing is, we have to communicate.
Hundred percent, you're speaking to the choir, I will say this. Hundred percent. You're speaking to the choir. I will say this. We have had a lot of transition. We hear you. We recognize the issue. I think there's a lot of people who are working overtime because it, and I will say our zoning administrator that we have now. Is newer and fantastic and proactive and she saw the same, she shares the same theory. I. And I spoke to her today about it.
She does because I tell you what, I told her about that. Well, I didn't see the bricks falling off, the, the stuff. And you know, condescending. I don't, I don't like that. And you, you know, it's just like I used to tell my, my people. If, if you have to fire somebody, it means you as a manager didn't do a good job because you didn't correct them. You know what I'm saying? That it's just, it, it, don't be condescending when somebody calls in. I would, I was very polite. I can be a very polite person and I explained everything twice. I've called her three or four times. And, and I'm worried about the park down there, but when people start tagging things, you're going to have a problem in your community.
Absolutely agree.
Then somebody else gets on it. And uh it seems to be a game with these people and their gang symbols is what they are if you look at them. And when you get one up there, then the other gang will come along and it's gonna be a complete problem. You need to stop it right now, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Talk to the owner of the International Beverage?
This is not my job.
No, but I, I'm just wondering if he's aware of it.
Oh, come on. You can't, you, you, how can he be aware of it?
Well, if you have a couple of bricks falling off your house and a neighbor notices, I mean, you have a private property. I don't know if that, and I don't know. We have to be careful because we're not. You know, I'm not.
I don't know, but, but, but before when we used to, we, we used to approve things. We had things called conditional use permits, which mean you, you've met certain standards. To keep whatever you, license you had or what's going on. People drinking in the parking lot, there's, I've gone by there in the morning and there's. There's um empty vodka bottles. You know, they must sit in the car and just throw them out there along with the urine. I mean, come on, it. Just stop it before it gets out of there. It's not just that building. If it starts there, it's down on the corner, they're tagging it. It's gonna go on and on and on. You've got to stop it right away. And, and I'm not, I'm not being nasty about the zoning administrator. I could care less. I'm just saying. Do your job. Be, be alert. Drive around. Look, take pictures.
We had it up.
I brought this up at the tagging on the bridge on by Rec Park and I was told it was too cold to panel. I think that has changed now.
Hundred percent. Uh, and that's also. There's an overlap there with the sheriff's department.
Ben was, Ben was handling it, so.
Oh yeah, she tried to pass that off to the sheriff's department. Well, you could call them and tell them, this is not my job to call the sheriff's department if someone's drinking in a parking lot. You know? It, it's just not, so I just want to live in a great community and I've never been to a better library in my life than you have here. I love all your activities you have. I love everything in the community. I love the majority of the people. Yeah, well. You can't love, you can't love everybody, you know? But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Mr. Albright, welcome. And thanks for coming in person.
Well, I just got some more news that brought me. Um, Joseph Albright, sixty-two, twenty-four, Pentecourt, southeast Carabelle Village. I'm here tonight to discuss a silent and invisible cancer that's creeping into our community. And will eventually downgrade our community as a whole. Over the last two years up through yesterday evening, I've been the unwitting, unapproving victim. Of absentee landlords buying properties in the township, renting them out. To less undesirable renters. The towns, the township doesn't, well, I shouldn't say it that way. I don't think anybody understands that these absentee landlords have no commitment to the community. The renters have no commitment to the community. Other than paying their rent check and the landlord, paying the taxes and opening a mailbox once a month. On one side of my property, I have two absentee landlord situations. And as of yesterday evening, I found out that I'm going to have a third one on the opposite side of my property lines. I talked to a neighbor behind me who is a very valued, I won't use his name because I don't have permission to. But he's a valued member of this community and a business owner. He and his wife are already talking about moving. Selling their property and moving. What this is, is a degradation of the community. And the thing that kind of tipped me off to is before I retired last summer as a over the road driver. I went through Lima, Ohio, listening to a local radio station. The subject matter that day was the number of rental properties in Lima, Ohio. Amazingly, it was seventy-six percent of the single family dwellings were rental. That's not a community. That's a great big motel. And I'm afraid that's where we're headed. Right now I'm an island amongst them. Uh, I have some suggestions that permits should be issued by the township. To allow anyone to rent a single family dwelling. Those permits should be. Receded by. I'm gonna throw a number out there, a ten thousand dollar bond. And anytime that. The sheriff's department has to make a call on that property. Anytime the animal control has to make a, a call to that property. Anytime Madison, who is doing a very good job in this respect. Has to make a call on that property. They should forfeit ten thousand dollar, I'm sorry, a thousand dollars of that bond for every call. And at the time, they decide to sell the property, only that amount that's left would be refundable to them. These people, when I say they have no commitment to community, they've never volunteered to work on that Fourth of July parade. They've never done the photographic opportunities for the fire department that I have done. And also been a volunteer to arrange the parade schedule at the administration building. They just come and go. They do not take care of their property. I have one right now at twenty-four fifty-six San Marie. The first time I went in to complain was the first time I realized that I was not the only member in Carabelle Village. Community to go and talk to Madison. I only gave her the street number, not the street, and she says not again. Because that's how many times we've been. People in our community have been making calls to the township or the sheriff's department or the animal control about this. The property is currently visually sitting empty. And I also believe there's an abandoned car in the driveway.
Thirty seconds.
And a um trailer with a motorcycle covered in a tarp.
How's the grass? Is it long?
The grass in the backyard is approximately three feet tall and the backyard is nothing more than a city dump. The door stands open at the back door of the house at all times. I have, I have a new problem at sixty-two ten San Marie. Uh, I'm sorry, that would be Pentecourt, sixty-two ten Pentecourt. New renters in there. The previous renter was an excellent renter. But the people next door to him at the twenty-four fifty-six ran him out. He got so frustrated, he left. And as of yesterday. I'm gonna say through the grapevine from another neighbor of mine is telling me that sixty-two thirty-six Pentecourt. Which is on the opposite side of my property line. She's moving to Ohio, gonna rent the house. She's not gonna take care of her property from Ohio, not properly. So it's an issue I think needs to be addressed. Single family dwellings should not be as Lima, Ohio is doing. And there, theirs is a slightly different situation. They have corporations coming in and buying the properties, then getting property managers. To take care of the properties. Yeah, that works real well. But. Um, it, it's just a situation that I'm. I'm almost to the point of leaving the community on this, myself. Because I'm tired. I take care of my property. Other people don't. My landscaping is suffering because they're not taking care of it. Weeds and seeds are blowing over to my property. And I've, I've just had it. But, uh, and. From other comments I've heard today, I will say that in the community. The appreciation for this board is much greater than previous boards.
Thank you, Mr. Albright.
Yes, two things, Greg. One, if, if, I think we have existing ordinances that about properties, if somebody's not maintaining them. Um, so those should be reported, Mr. Albright. Yeah, so let us know those exact addresses that you have. Because, because somebody can check if, if the current ordinance are being violated. And second, then can we ask Brian? To draft ordinances so we start to formulate some rules about absentee landlords. If we don't have anything on the books today. And our ordinances with regulations or stipulations for, for, for.
Rental, like a.
For rental, yeah, which is what he's getting to.
A rental.
Depot, deposits, or what it's.
Yeah, we should have.
Money maker.
So.
Even starting the process to, to make rental permits.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's why I think we should ask Brian if he can start to draft some.
Well, I think we'll ask legal counsel, for example, the hotels that just were getting. Just terrible, huge amounts of crime and taking tons of time and interview money.
Different issue, this one.
No, I'm just saying process wise, how it came about was then the, our local community policing officer. Went out and founded us an ordinance that would address, well, in a potential clawback, you know, where you recapture those funds from the, the bad business owner. Whose business model is go cheap and let us clean up their mess. So then it went to legal, you know, there's different. Yeah, I don't think Brian can come up with it on his own.
I mean, in most communities have rental permits, like.
That home on Cascade Road that trustee Nordhook mentioned.
That's, that's just it. We don't enforce our ordinance when we get a complaint. That one went on for a, oh, well over a year.
We.
And if it wasn't for the owner dying and the eviction, we still would be dealing with that property.
And I will say our current zoning administrator, and I, I, I spoke to her today about the broken window theory.
We tried with.
Proactive is the new.
It was, it's a step process. It's just like, the reason those people got evicted is we've owned rental properties. It's a long, difficult process to evict somebody. And with. Some of the COVID regulations that were in place that you could not evict somebody, I think that homeowner could not. Do what they wanted to do until you have, there's so much notice.
There's always a sob story. We should have proacted. That was so bad that that would be the broken window. You don't want to, it's expensive to enforce. But that's the one you make an example out of and you hit not just the tenant, but the land, but the landlord.
Well, Madison knew the house by the.
We didn't do that.
Need the street. So that tells me that there's been a lot of calls on that house.
And I think by starting with some sort of rental permit process, I think.
I don't think it'll help if we don't enforce.
No, I agree, but then you can have stipulation in there that it does go back to the homeowners.
Perhaps it should be a.
Our properties. If our, if our renters, even if it was in the rental agreement for them to mow the lawn, when they didn't mow the lawn, we got the bill from the city.
Correct.
And, and, and we, we can't do that unless we have something in place with rental permits.
Well, we're in the middle of looking for a new manager and this board normally makes policy that staff implements. So I think existing staff, as long as they know, one, going forward, we want a proactive stance. And two, we should take this into consideration when we're interviewing candidates. Legally, no, they cannot be. Elected officials are required to. You can give them a financial incentive, pay them more if they do live in the township, but you can't require them anymore.
I think every manager should live in the township because if they're involved in decisions.
In, in the game.
My wife, my family, my grandchildren, their family should be involved in it also.
It's tricky too because it's expensive. It's the housing market, but you're right, a hundred percent.
We agree.
Okay, there's one other situation. I don't know if it really exists or not, but there's a home on Cascade Road that was advertised for sale at one time. With a mother-in-law suite. There are six, maybe seven cars sitting on that property.
Can you send us?
People are allowed to live in one residential. Site.
Maybe. She could, she'll check it out.
You're doing a good job, Madison.
You are.
But you're kind of catch, you're playing catch-up because um, but you're doing a great job.
Hi there, Scott Fansel, come on again. Uh, yes, regarding ordinance two, one, six dash one with property conditions. You know, grasses higher than eight inches are against township ordinance. Uh, there's one at sixty-two seventy Cascade Road. That's just past Laraway Lake. It's the house.
No Mo May was in there. They had a sign out front.
I don't know about that, but they, they have a big wall of, they have the, they have the wall of Arbor Whitey. There. I looked it up. It looks like it's an octogenarian that lives there. She's a widow, so. I don't know if she's still around or whatever.
What's an octogenarian?
She's eighty, over eighty years old. Yeah. So, um, just to check that one out, along the, the right of way, in front of the trees, and then her whole yard is, you know, probably at least a foot tall. And then also along Cascade Road, I know there's obviously the um. Path construction and all that, but who's in charge of mowing or keeping that area short? Because that's also rather long. It just doesn't look good. And then regarding, I'm following up with what Mr. um. Schultz said regarding tagging. I don't know, have you guys seen these stickers around the village?
Where are they?
On signs and there, there's probably about a dozen or two.
Like on like stop signs?
On stop signs on the black light poles running down uh Twenty-Eighth Street. I don't know who put them there or whatnot, but like I said, I've seen them all around the village and there's at least probably a dozen to two dozen of them. They're probably four by five stickers. If you walk around the village, you, you'll see them, but that's. And I don't know what it says. I've tried looking it up or whatever. It's, looks like can't cert or some, I don't know, I don't read old English, but. I looked it up online and I couldn't find anything. So, but those are just some things that I saw. And yes, there's usually lots of. Yards or lands with grasses longer than eight inches that should either at least get talked to or a letter sent or what have you, just to keep up on that.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your concerns.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ian Holcomb, thirty-four fifteen Glenstone Court. It's my understanding that. Eagle Creek Landscaping, they have enlarged. Their property and this goes back over two years, three years with Steve Peterson, two years with Ben Swayze. Let me go on the record and say, he didn't do anything for me. He might have did things for the rest of Cascade Township. But he didn't do his job properly. And there's very evidence with us and other things that he just took. Years before he would even do anything. He blamed everything or he put everything off on Eagle as far as Eagle Creek. Eagle's done with. And we told him time and time again that there's cascade issues and there's eagle issues. And he wouldn't do anything about the cascade issues. One of those is by him enlarging his property. When we first talked to Steve Peterson and then to Ben Swayze, we said. You know, he cannot enlarge his property according to the P U D, which he did. And if he would have been talked to and if he would have been presented. He wouldn't, it wouldn't have got to the point that it is now. So what we would like and we would like to know who to talk to, seeing as how we don't have a manager. Who do we talk to about getting him? Because Eagle only made him, made him put down wildflower seeds. He took down fifty, seventy-five, a hundred foot trees. Don't know if they were endangered. That wasn't part of Eagle. We understand that. But he clear cut forty, fifty feet and you can go check it out. We want that barrier put back up. Now, one of the trees native to Michigan is Michigan white pine. So we want to plan. We want to know what's he's gonna put back in there. Both on the north side and the west side. I wish Bob Kramer was here because he clear cut a lot on that side. But he's in violation of Cascade Township's P U D. So we want him to put it back or he should be presented with it. If you don't put it back the way it was, because you enlarged your property and you're not allowed to. We're gonna yank your special P U D permit. So he's got two options. If he wants to stay, he needs to put that barrier back up. Who do we see to get this process rolled? And this is a Cascade Township, not Eagles out of it.
So did you get the legal, our legal counsel's non-privileged version of the letter about the scope of the P U D and their legal analysis of it?
Yep. And the very last sentence said he is not permissible to enlarge his property. And they suggested that the Cascade Township send him a letter telling him that.
Hold on, Mr. Holcomb, because I sympathize with you and I, we're all on the same page going forward. My, is that the letter? He said notwithstanding the gray, not in, notwithstanding the, that it's a gray area, not. that it's a gray area, not black and white. He still would suggest sending letters.
Yeah.
So it's a little different. It's.
Send the letter?
We're doing what we can on our end. We don't make the laws. We've got good counsel to follow them. So I mean.
But with a little bit of pressure, you know, and I don't care what Steve Peterson and Ben Swayze told him. Because we told both of them and we told the owner, yeah, you can do whatever you want on your property as long as it's legal. Obviously, he didn't abide by that. And if the manager and I think Steve Peterson was the manager before Ben Swayze, if they would have done their job and at least talked to the landowner, he wouldn't have clear cut forty, fifty feet of woods that he should not have done.
The trees were on his property.
Yes.
So for example.
Oh, he can cut them down if he wants.
Except it's in a wetland, so then he's got a, yes, you can cut trees on your property and then the issue is, can you?
But you cannot expand past a certain, which it's a gray area. Okay, you can do like, if you only had three employees. Can he go to twelve, twenty? Yeah. Can he go to two hundred? No. So there's a leeway there. And it was never presented in twenty thirteen. It was ramrodded through the system. And then he did something other than what it was initially. It was just for the golf course. It was a storage area for their lawn mowers and things like that.
So we have, so we have a a legal analysis about, one, I I agree. I lived in your shoes, but no, just listen, it's not. I know you're telling us what the law is, but we're in a tricky spot.
The laws, I'm telling you what, how I read it. There was gray area, yeah.
All right, moving forward. The township paid good money for an accurate legal analysis that no, not surprisingly came back. It's not black and white. It's not an easy answer. And we should, and I think we should direct staff to write a letter to that landowner saying that for the reason stated in the legal opinion, don't expand, don't expand your business anymore. That being said, if he plants trees that aren't as high as you want, I completely get it, but he cuts down a hundred-foot tree and then the the state allows him to, you know, requires it to replant and it's a, it's a small tree. Hate to say it, but I, we don't have any leg to stand on in that. That's not, it stinks. It's garbage, but it's not a township. There's nothing we can do. The two thousand thirteen P U D, yes, going forward, we we should, there's a lack of enforcement or just loosey-goosey stuff, but legally, with what's in front of us. We can't, I mean, we're doing what we can.
Can or won't?
No, can't. I'm trying to be patient. I'm going to schedule the meeting with the legal counsel. I'm one who has moved it forward with Ben. Can't. I literally had to call up, no, listen, listen. I called our legal counsel on, knowing that this was coming up after I initially got the the analysis on the P U D issue, which I don't think your, your, your summary was accurate, to make sure that we could provide you, the residents, that what township funds paid for a legal analysis saying what are, what we're constrained with. We've done that. I get it. It's not fair, but I think what you're asking for is unrealistic and I apologize. This is frustrating. This is just, I, I, maybe you need to sit down. We're not the experts, but we've done everything we can and I think.
And I think it's hard too when we keep talking.
Can't, not won't.
He got a non-conforming use approved.
Yes.
Time. So I I understand that what he's doing is not within the P U D, but back in uh whatever year this was.
No, it is within the P U D. That's the problem. The way the P U D is written, he's doing the exact same thing. The problem is the township should have been more on top of, if you if you expand it and there's a gray area and.
Legal counsel is telling us.
So when's the letter gonna go out?
What letter?
I just said that we should send him a letter.
The letter, the, the recommendation is to send him a letter that says you, based on the non-conforming use, you cannot expand anymore. That's.
Anymore or should it not have been from day one?
I read.
No, we're not gonna send that letter.
And it says we could consider.
Not anymore.
Issuing a correspondence that says the use on the property is non-conforming and any expansion in size or intensity is a violation of the non-conforming status. So it's really saying to them, putting them on warning that as of right now, we're letting you know that you cannot expand. That's how I read this.
Yep. And process wise, if we have ordinances, which we do, they need to be enforced. Staff has been directed that we will be proactive in our enforcement. I agree with you. Then in the past, we may not have been. But and then if there's a legal issue or if there's a question, then we go to legal counsel who will clarify it. That's what we did. We received our feedback. It's a gray area, so I understand. Super disappointing to have a bad neighbor cut down hundred-foot trees and you're left staring at them. Flip side is, there's a limit to what we can do at the township. If they do what the state suggested to restore the wetland and they replace trees that are very short, I get it. I wouldn't be happy either, but there's nothing we can do at the township level. The next, the only thing we can do in addition to sending a letter, which we've done and staying on top of them for ordinance violations, nuisance violations, which we are doing, and I agree, I'm and we're in between managers right now for a reason. But I will say the only thing we can do moving forward, the next step up would be to decide if we're going to use public taxpayer funds to sue a property owner in this township. And based on the legal analysis with a gray area, I'm not necessarily comfortable doing that.
So we felt win. I was gonna say, I felt like their recommendation was.
You won't win, right? And this was after a meeting on the same thing and talking about it multiple times where staff was included on that meeting. So the next step up, which the only thing we can do is sue a resident, business owner. When we don't know if it's clear we're gonna win. And I don't think that's a fair place to put taxpayer dollars right now. Having said that, I very much empathize with the situation you're in. My frustration is not with you personally, it's with the overall process and what we are able to do and handle with the process.
So a letter is.
But I think your expectations need to be realistic in what you can expect from this township. And based on what you said, I don't think they are.
So a letter will be sent to him.
Madison, could you please draft a letter stating what legal counsel recommended in the, in the legal analysis? Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Mr. Trustee Shipley.
I was just gonna say, they were sent a letter May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two and underlined a number six in one of their violations. They were ordered that their non-conforming use may not be extended or enlarged.
Will you send another letter that says that?
Yes.
Highlighted, all caps, maybe just bold. Not all caps. You say we're also closely monitoring their business actions?
There's something in special ordinance that says that the actions cannot devalue the neighboring properties.
Planning director Hillbrands or?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I believe that there was and yeah, I believe that there was. And if so, then perhaps one of Mr. Holcomb's relief could come from filing a lawsuit.
Private lawsuit?
A private lawsuit. And that's been done before. Both against the property owner and the township. For failure to act. I'm not suggesting Mr. Holcomb do that. Being on this township board, but he may get some legal relief and some final relief. And now I'm done opening up Pandora's Box.
Hi, my name's Tom Richardson. I live at thirty-four, thirty-eight North Apple Cross Court. Um, I've been a resident of Cascade for twenty years and ten months. I came here tonight just to listen, but trustee Shipley made a comment that I feel I need to respond to. I expect public officials to conduct their business professionally with a civil demeanor. Not to, you know, engage in unnecessary anger or violent language. We have a lot of problems with violent, violence in our country. We've had political violence recently, both with January sixth. As well as in Cascade Township, a member of the planning commission made a comment regarding violence towards another board member and resigned before this board could remove him from that office. And trustee Shipley made a comment referring to some of the worst, worst violence in the history of this country. That, that's not a way to conduct the public's business. That's the kind, even if it's metaphorical, it's wrong. It's hostile. It's not the kind of language one would use at my place of work. It's not the kind of language one would expect, say, a public school teacher to use. And it's not the kind of language and attitude that we should expect a public elected official to use. So I hope that the whole attitude of that kind of behavior changes. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments in person or virtual?
Deadline will be thirteen days, um, the twenty-seventh at five P M. Cause our next board meeting is the twenty-eighth. So that was our, that's what I think we.
Pay attention, because I'm hoping that backyard, that you guys get the notice. I'm curious.
Yeah, and and I think that the direction was to send it out as soon as possible. That's our, that's I think our goal.
And maybe showing up in person will be a factor in the board's consideration when we're doling out the liquor license. Thank you.
Ken Vanderkirk, seventy-two hundred Leighton. Um, I've been coming to a bunch of the meetings. And you had a closed session meeting here a while back with the lawyers on the ordinance for hotels. Has anything been done or is that another gray area we're not gonna do anything with?
Not a gray or a black and white, but I think during the transition, it may have.
All I hear is our lawyers say it's a gray area.
No, no, that one's not. That one we can do.
And did something happen? Waiting on the lawyers. And the lawyers, as long as we wait for the lawyers, more and more rescue units have been sent over there, police unit over there. It's costing us money. So let's have these lawyers either hire somebody else and get this job done or quit saying it's a gray area and.
It's not a gray area. That's the other issue.
It's not, nothing's happening. So let's get these guys going. We hired them to do a job, didn't we?
We did, and our manager usually follows up.
No, no.
I, I know.
No, we appreciate it. Also, just so, um, I, we did meet or I met with the two community policing officers yesterday, or I guess I should say last week and agreed that this needs to happen and should be a priority and will be a priority. Um, but also not to minimize it because that's money that we don't need to spend.
And it's costing, it's costing us money every time we send the crews who are over there. But the lawyers are saying.
They're not, no, this is.
They're not doing.
I don't think it's quite fair to put on the lawyers, but I agree that we will get on it and make it a priority. Having said that, just so that you know and the community knows, the numbers of calls from those hotels, based on other things we've done to, you know, targeted enforcement and being proactive has gone down drastically. Fully agree with you that it's be a priority and we need to recoup every bit we can, but just so that the community knows uh, the level, the number of calls greatly reduced.
It just seems like this new law firm you got is doing a lot of gray area. And so we either have to get somebody and bring it back into black and white or get somebody else. It's just not happening. I mean, do something, kick them. I'm sorry, I, that's the way I'm feeling about, I sit back there and I hear this. It's gray. It's gray and nothing's happening. Nothing's happening. I came up here and I'm moaning, groaning about a house on Cascade Road there. And it was over a year and a half to get something done. And nothing's happening. Nothing's happening. So we either have to get some ordinances that are black and white and enforce them or close the doors and go home. I mean, because nothing's happening. I mean, that's the way I'm seeing it. These people have stuff that that maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but yeah, we're not gonna do anything for them. Just go do it yourself. And that, that's, that's embarrassing to me to say, to hear you say that.
Hear me say what?
That the township is not gonna do anything.
About what? No, I didn't say, okay, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Even if we don't disagree, even if we don't disagree with it, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Anyone else? Sure.
Estimate we spent eight hundred dollars last year trying to keep hostages in our front yard in a twenty by twenty patch. And I think you know why. I understand you had a.
The landlords.
Pardon?
The landlords?
No, no, yeah. Trust me, that landlord is working his tail off for those hostages. I know you did a haunted peace park, which I don't understand because the deer are in the populated areas. I've been to peace park. There's hardly any houses out there. I don't think it benefited anyone. And I know that apparently no deer were harvested in the first place. But um get my glasses back on here. Where does the D N R's responsibility come on this? The D N R puts down the rules. The rules for hunters, who can hunt, where they can hunt, when they can hunt, what they can hunt. It seems to me they ought to be responsible for their game. And I think a good idea would be to try to get the D N R to come in here, live trap the deer that are here. Get them out of the populated areas of Cascade Township. And the D N R in the state of Texas has been working on a program where they have hog feeders, feral hogs. The hog feeders are designed to only let the hogs that make hog noises get into them. They open for that, for the sound. The feed that's in there sterilizes the hogs. So that would be.
That could be open to some abuse, but I guess.
It's a no kill situation.
In the wrong hands, that could be.
Yeah.
Effectively bad.
It's a nuke, it's a no kill situation. And I've got news for you. If the does are not coming in the heat, the bucks aren't gonna be here either. So, but I think the D N R has some responsibility and should be involved in this, this problem we're facing.
Thank you.
Let me shoot all the geese I want. They won't.
Uh, and our new parks director is uh actually has reached out to the, the D N R and, and the county and a few other things to work on this. So we just want to, she just wants to make sure and we agree that we're not throwing good money after bad. Because it's a complicated issue and if it were easily solved, other communities would take note, but to date, no one has figured out how to. And I think the, this has come up before when people have uh mentioned the deer issue. Township allows, everything that the state allows, the township allows. So I think hunting's a more, there are more options for hunting in the township than what people might um realize. And so, for example, if your neighborhood bylaws prevent that, but state law would allow you to based on you know, number of feet from a home, then that would be an issue to take up with your, your association bylaws, not the township. So. But agreed. Thank you. You're certainly not alone. Any other problems that the township could work on solving? Or expectations that we could help make more realistic? Virtually or in person? No, we get it. We appreciate you guys are here and you all have uh good intentions and we're sorry that it's not as easy as we wish it could be. Board member comment?
As always, thanks for coming. It's nice to see the crowd getting larger. Mr. Richardson, I'd like to address that and I apologize to you and I, I take a duly noted of the concerns. Bring your neighbors next time. Hopefully next time, all the hope is not a method. We have some of these issues resolved for you guys.
Anyone else? Your motion?
Motion made to adjourn since we have met the obligations on amended agenda. Motion made to adjourn since we have met the obligations on amended agenda. Supporter.
The motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you.